...over there.
Little house clean before we start.[16.14][16.14](laughing)
Before we call it over.
Welcome to the Planning Commission. The date is Monday, October 27th. Will everyone please rise for Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, maybe seated. First item of tonight's agenda is actual approval of the agenda. Does anyone have any comments or questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, move to approve tonight's agenda.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Can you post? Moving on is the actual approval for the minutes for the October 13th, 2014 meeting. Does anyone have any changes they'd like to make? No? Okay. At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions at all?
All stated.
Okay. Okay, with that being said, we will move right on to the planner's report. Julie, do you want to take us through that briefly before we hand it over?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, Robert Ellis, Public Works Director, is in attendance this evening to provide a presentation on the draft bicycle and pedestrian report that's been prepared. At the conclusion of his comments, I believe he'll be looking for a recommendation from the Planning Commission with a recommendation of approval to the city council.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Ellis, let's discuss if you can give us like a 10 or 15 minute kind of overview, and then I know the commissioners probably have some questions for you, and we'll go from there.
Absolutely. Thank you for inviting me back again tonight, and I do have just about 10 to 15 minutes of an overview of the process that has gotten us to this point, and then, of course, the reason I'm here tonight is to get any input from the commission, answer any questions, but hopefully move towards a recommendation for the city council to adopt this. And I'll be doing the same thing with our Parks and Recreation and Natural Resources Commission. So to kick things off tonight, I do have a PowerPoint. And when I was here two weeks ago, I was with Antonio Rosellas of Community Design Group. There, the consultant had helped us put the plan together, and it really started about a year ago, excuse me, in 2013, the city council through one of their goal sessions determined that one of the things that they'd like the city to work on is a more robust or updating of the pedestrian and bicycle plan. And so we started looking for ways that this could be funded through a grant, and we reached out to the Hennepin County to see if this is something that they would be interested in doing, and fortunately, they were. It took us two tries, but they ultimately decided that we were eligible for their community transformation grant. It's a grant actually through the Center for Disease Control administered through Hennepin County, but they awarded us that grant, and it paid for the study that you should have copies of, and that I'll be going over tonight. So it was 100% funded by Hennepin County, which was very nice. And they were great partners on this because there are a number of roadways within our community that are within their jurisdiction, and they're important for pedestrian and bicycle purposes as well. And then, as I mentioned, Community Design Group was the consultant that was selected to help assist in the drafting of the plan. So the project started, as far as the community engagement section goes, about April of 2014, and we were in this building in April, and we hosted a citywide open house, and we had very good turnout from the public. And we combined that with a Parks, Recreation, and Natural Resource Commission meeting that was that night. So we tied the two together. We started with an open house. We had about 40 attendees, a lot of comments, a very diverse group of people that attended that meeting, and we came up to the Parks Rec Natural Resources Commission, presented to them, and really kicked it off, started with getting a lot of input from them. The next thing we did is we hosted a number of listening sessions with some very focused audiences that we wanted to reach out to. One was the Somali Moms Group. Another one was the Senior Center. They have an old spokes group of people that like to bike around the community. And then also the early childhood family education parents, another group that we met with over at the Preserve Mar. Received a lot of comments from them, and I'll start going through some of those comments a little bit later. But the other thing I want to mention is that we formed an internal working group. It was a group of professionals from within the city. It was fire, police, assessing, planning, engineering, park streets. It was really looking at this thing from all different angles, from building it to managing it to operating it and maintaining it. We also had Hennepin County staff involved in those. We met on a monthly to bimonthly basis, really reviewing the comments that were coming in, talking about how to get more comments, get more engagement, and really starting to refine some of the information that was coming in and deciding what to do with it. The third thing, or the fourth thing that we did, which was probably the most popular and the most used, or I guess generated the most public engagement, and that was the development of our City of Eden Prairie pedestrian bicycle website. On there, you could visit the site, and you could take a number of surveys that we had, and they would ask things like, "Why do you bike? Why do you walk? Is it because you're trying to get to school? You're trying to go to work? It's recreation? It's, you know, just tell us a little bit more about why you walk and bike and where you're going." So a lot of questions like that. It also asked them to, you know, it would give pictures and ask, "Do you feel comfortable in this type of environment when you're walking or biking, or does this feel too claustrophobic or uncomfortable?" So a lot of input was received that way. And when you look at the people that used the website, we had 162 different users filled out the survey. We also had a Wiki map where people could go on, and they could note exactly where they think barriers are, places they're trying to get to, routes they use, routes that they'd like to use, but there are no facilities, download videos if you want. And we actually had 119 unique users that posted 281 comments on where they try to go, barriers, things of that nature. And overall, when you combine all of the website information we received, all the listening sessions, the open house engagements we had, we've got about 29 pages that's in the engagement plan of comments we received. So there was a lot of information that came from the public that helped develop this plan. So while we were getting all of that public input, we were also looking at existing conditions and trying to analyze what type of issues we have out there. The first thing we looked at was our Southwest Transit Bus System. We've got a very successful system in town, so this is where all of their stops are. So we know people are trying to walk to these locations to get on a bus. We also know light rail's coming, so we know where those five stations are. We know that's going to generate a lot of bike and pedestrian traffic. We knew where all of our existing facilities were. We have all of this in GIS format, so it was very easy to manipulate the data. We know where sidewalks and trails are. We know where recreational paths are, and we have a pretty robust system. We also knew where a lot of our destinations are, all of our schools, libraries, grocery stores, employment centers, retail centers, bus stops. We knew where people were trying to get to, where those assets were. And so this map just kind of shows your half-mile walk shed circled around those destinations. So you can see where it's purple, that means that's where people are trying to get to. When it's yellow, there aren't as many of those types of facilities. So walkers generally in purple, this is where they're trying to get to. Bikers, because they can move a little bit faster in a short amount of time, that purple area just gets spread out. So you see, it's again, it's concentrated along 212, 494, the major center area. That's no surprise, but again, it helped tell the story. And then we had, we had a lot of knowledge internally. I mean, our police department knows where issues are, where we're having accidents, where we're getting complaints. Our Parks and Recreation Engineering Offices, they know that, too. We deal with those on a daily basis. So using that internal knowledge, we put together a map where we knew where there were barriers that we've heard about in the past, or where there were missing routes. So again, just formulating all of that existing condition data. And then the website. Again, this was a snapshot of what people were posting on the website as far as destinations, amenities, barriers, routes they'd like to take, routes they do take. All of that was formulated in the GIS data layer as well. So once all that information came in, we heard from the public, then we really started putting the meat and potatoes, as Mr. Rosellas said last time, together for the plan. That was the recommendations. That's really the important part of the plan. You saw this map last time I was here. It shows where they're recommending sidewalks and trails be installed to complete the system across the community. And what you're going to see is a lot of our major streets, they're calling for trails or sidewalks. And then one thing that you also see in purple is the neighborhood slow streets. And again, that's, these are streets that have some continuity, like Village Wood, Drive, Sunny Brook, Mount Curve Road, some of those roadway neighborhood streets that have some distance. And what they're recommending here is, you know, we want people to drive 25 miles per hour, so it's conducive to people walking and biking in the neighborhood. So trying to do what you can to remind people that they might be people using sidewalks, crossing intersections, or maybe riding their bikes in the road. Do traffic calming, or anything that will help remind drivers to stay in that 25 mile per hour, whether it's enforcement of police of the speed zones, maybe it's marking pedestrian crosswalks, or maybe it's installing stop signs. I mean, it's really an endless list of things you can do, but again, just trying to remind that that street should be shared by all users. And then the other part of the recommendation was the on-road bike facility. So something that would be new to Eden Prairie. The recommendation here is, you know, go for roads that have some continuity, again, can span the city, because that's what people on bikes want to do. They're not just going across the street, they're making larger distance trips. So Dell Road, Valley View Road, Mitchell Baker, Anderson Lakes Parkway, Scenic Heights Drive, those were the ones that popped out, is you might be able to do that, because your traffic volumes aren't so high, you're not dealing with five-lane roadways in most cases, and it's something that would fit within the realm of engineering principles for on-road bike lanes. Now, I'm not saying that you could go do that today. I'm saying that in time, as these roads are reconfigured, you'd want to take that into consideration with the new design. And when we did ask the survey of the people that are bikers, and we asked them, "What improvements would you like to see made in Eden Prairie?", the overwhelming majority, it might be hard to read here, but it's in the report, is on-road bike lanes, more separation from cars, and those were the top two, and I think even number three says something more about on-road facilities. So when you ask bikers what they want to see in Eden Prairie, that's what they're really saying. I think they were given the option, pick your top three of all of these. And, you know, number four or five is more off-road facilities. So they just want more facilities, but they're saying more of those facilities should be in the roadway. Because I think what we're seeing are people that do want to ride to school, ride to work, or they're doing a more rigorous recreation type of a ride. Now, our consultant then took all of those citywide recommendations and said, you know, "This is what the city should plan to build towards the future. It's going to take a long time to get there." So if you needed to prioritize it, this was their top six, I'm trying to read that, but I think top six recommendations for route improvements. And again, they had two different types of recommendations, one for routes and one for intersections. So if you look at this one, the number one recommendation was actually to pave the regional trail, and you wouldn't believe how many comments from the public. It never dawned on me, the gravel, you know, is something that prevents them from using it more, but that was the number one recommendation. And I should take that back. This isn't number one recommendation. I think that, as a whole, these are the six recommendations they're making. There's no specific order to this, but a recommendation to pave the regional trail. And again, that was very popular with the public. That's what we heard from them, too. The next one was Valley View Road. Paving those sections of Valley View Road with a multi-use trail where they don't exist right now. So when you get over to Highway 101, there's a small section from Tartan over to 101 that doesn't have a trail or a sidewalk, they're saying, "Go ahead and finish that out." So there's connection of the Highway 101 trail. Also, over towards the major center area, there's a section there that doesn't have the trail on the north side. They're saying you should finish that section out as well. Number three was the Golden Triangle, doing Shady Oak Road, Valley View Road, so that you have some facility in there where all those jobs are. We know LRT's coming. We see that as something that's going to be needed when that comes. Number four was more about the mall. Mall really doesn't have a gateway, if you're a pedestrian or bicyclist, to get in. There is no friendly way to get into the mall, whether it's Flying Cloud Drive or it's Prairie Center Drive. So they're saying, "Make some improvement so that it's safer to cross those major intersections, but then also so you're not navigating a sea of parking lot to get to the front doors." There's something that would be more conducive, more friendly to getting those types of uses in. Five is one we hear a lot about, and that's Flying Cloud Drive, making that connection. We know that with the Highway 61 reconstruction, it's going to get that trail on the southern end of town. What this recommendation is saying, pick up where they're going to leave off with that project and carry that all the way up towards the mall area where we don't have trails now. And then the last one is Prairie Center Drive. I think what we're saying there is, this is a major destination area. We need to make sure we're looking at that entire corridor to make sure that we have trails on both sides of the roadway. So that was their recommendation for routes. And then the second recommendation they had was at intersections, and I'll quickly go through these. Eden Prairie Road and Valley View, high school students, gets a lot of traffic, is what they're saying there. Number two is Highway 4 and Highway 5. Again, that can be a treacherous intersection to cross. We've got Mitchell and Valley View. We've looked at also Anderson Lakes Parkway and Garden. That's the hook point. That's where the marked crosswalk is. That's where you've got the crossing guard. That's where the kids are crossing north to south there. We've heard from the school district plenty of times that they'd like to see some improvements there, and our consultant agrees with that, because you have younger children. Five is Flying Cloud Drive, Anderson Lakes Parkway, again, major crossing. Six is at Anderson Lakes Parkway and Center Way. That's the Preserve complex, where you have their pool, their tennis facilities, all of the facilities that they have. You've got people crossing all summer long across Anderson Lakes Parkway at Center Way. And they've approached us in the past, saying they'd like to see improvements made there as well. So this essentially is in agreement with that. Number seven is Preserve Boulevard and Prairie Center Drive. Again, this is tying in with that entrance to the mall, make it more conducive to a safe crossing, comfortable crossing. And then items one through seven, everything that I just went through, what they're saying for improvements, it could really be anything. They're not pinpointing one concept, but they're saying, "Maybe it's more pedestrian walk time at your signals. Maybe it's putting in the countdown timer, so you know how long you have to cross. Maybe it's reducing radius, so it isn't such a long way to cross the roadway. It could be narrowing lanes, so it's a shorter distance. Maybe it's putting a pedestrian refuge island in the median, so that they can just get halfway across the road, take a break, look for a gap in traffic, and make it the rest of the way across the road." So it could be a number of things. The only one that they had a specific comment or recommendation for, that's number eight. Number eight is the railroad tracks getting to the high school. If you're on Duck Lake Trail or Duck Lake Road, you take that little short cross, cross the railroad tracks, and I think there may have been a fatality there a number of years ago. They're saying that that gets enough use, that we need to recognize it as a real crossing, and we need to put in an underpass. The Federal Rail Administration, the railroad, will not let us put in an at-grade crossing, even if you put gates, bells, whistles, lights. No, that's not an option to them. So that means you either have to go over or under, and they're recommending that you do make a grade separate, and probably be an underpass in this location because of the geometry there. But again, it gets a lot of traffic. I mean, I live in that area. I see on football games, there's families just walking from Prairie View to the football game. So it gets a lot of traffic. So that rounded off most of the recommendations. I'm not going to spend any time on this, but the next five slides, they're really about the LRT stations, and you've probably seen this in the Transitional Station Area Action Plan, plan that Hennepin County put together, the city, and perhaps the Planning Commission has already taken up previous action on. All we're doing here is we're saying, "We completely agree with all the pedestrian and bicycle improvements that are already in that plan, so for all five stations." So I'm not going to spend really any time on that, but we felt it was important that our plan conformed with that more regional plan. The last thing I'm going to spend a couple of minutes speaking about is the last chapter of the plan. It's called the Toolbox. And I want to be very clear that this is just ideas. These are things other communities have done, that they have suggested might work in Eden Prairie, or they might not, but they're ideas that are there, available for you to explore. And these would include things like requiring bike racks at any new developments, end-of-trip facilities, really getting, allowing an incentive for people to ride a bike. If there's a facility for them to lock up, then that makes sense. Might be wayfinding, having signs throughout the city to better guide travelers. It might be making, you know, more aesthetically pleasing wayfinding, like you see along the regional trail. The one photo there with the red vending machine looking thing, that's a fix-it station. There's a place you can go in, and it's got parts you can buy for your bike and air, if you pump up your tire. Maybe that would make sense at all the LRT stations. And then they even looked at a few intersections where we'd know we had barriers, and they kind of made some suggestions, and that's found in the plan. It talked a lot about snow and ice removal, that, you know, we spend half of our year in snow and ice conditions, so making sure that we're aggressive with our maintenance, because there are people that use it during the wintertime as well. Talked about providing benches along our routes, and benches at your end-of-trip facilities as well. Talked about not putting your traffic construction signing across the sidewalks, because that's usually the most available space there is. Also talked about, and this is something that our mayor was very big on, and she wanted to make sure that this plan looked at this, and this was more of a developing a highly visible, well-marked loop around our community that would touch on a lot of our amenities. And so with Stu's help, he's actually kind of diagrammed out a loop that might make sense. You know, it's enough that it would take some time to ride it, but it would hit Rice Marsh Lake, Lake Riley, Staring Lake, Round Lake, Purgatory Park. It really hits a lot of our main park facilities. And that would have enhanced wayfinding signage, or maybe even monument signage, so that this is really a destination. This is, this is a route people are going to come into our community to ride, because it's that nice. Some of the other things they recommend in the Toolbox, bike rodeos, developing safer route to school programs, developing a complete streets policy, applying to become a bicycle-friendly community. And then for the engineers, and there's a couple of us here in the room, some suggestions on how you decide when you put in a marked crosswalk, when you put in one of those rapid rectangular flashing beacons, a hawk signal, a traffic signal, pedestrian bumpouts, refuge islands, a really, and there's kind of a section devoted to this, it's just to help us so we have some uniformity and reasoning behind why we put in certain types of facilities. So there's just a lot of information in that Toolbox. So that's my presentation. I tried to stay in that 10 to 15. It might have went a little bit long, but anyways, I'm here tonight, input, questions. You know, I want to make this a plan that we, as a community, all feel comfortable with. It's going to take time to implement it, and things will change. I mean, this is a plan, a living document, five years from now, two years from now, new principles, new strategies. This will change in time, but I think we need to start somewhere, and that's what we've done here. If you try to create kind of a ground zero for, you know, really building out a very robust bike and pedestrian system that takes it a step beyond where we've been and where, how we've planned up to this point, but truly try to, now that we're pretty much a built community, how do we tie this all together? So with that.
Thank you, Director Ellis. I appreciate it. Why don't you just stay right there, because I'm sure we'll have some questions for you and whatnot. Julie, before we get going with the commissioners, do you have any other comments you'd like to address to us?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, no, I don't have any further comments at this time.
Okay. Commissioners, we kind of had some homework to do. Who wants to start us off?
I'll start.
Okay? That'd be great, thank you.
First of all, my thanks for all the work that's gone into this, because there is an incredible amount of detail on this plan. And I, after going through this base document, see if I'm correct about this, I ended up finding five different kinds of pathways that we're talking about in the plan. And see if I'm right about these. This was just conceptual. The first one is off-street pedestrian only. Now, I'm not positive that existed, but I'm there, I'm referring to sidewalks, those kinds of things. The second one is off-street pedestrian and bicycle only, so the two sharing. The third one is off-street protected bikeways. That looked like a relatively minor one, but it was in there. And then there was on-street bicycle only, and on-street bicycle motor vehicle only. And when I looked at this, the only, one of the major questions that I came up with, and I'm just curious, did we look at the possibility of, is there any value in thinking about areas where we would reduce access by motor vehicles so that it would become, whether it be the town center or something like that, a primarily pedestrian and bicycle-oriented place to get into? It's just a question, because these make it easier to get around, and there's a lot of value in that, I think, but is there value in reducing the ability of automobiles or motor vehicles to get into certain parts of the city, like the town center, or is that something we don't think is a very good idea?
I don't know that we, as a community, have really had that discussion, and I think it would go perhaps a little bit beyond this. I will tell you, the plan did not look at that. I have not heard that discussion in all of the LRT discussions, or the town center plans or major center area plans. So I don't think that that's ever been looked at, or if it has, not very seriously.
Okay.
Not to say that there isn't some merit to that, you know. I come from a community that did that. They developed a plaza in their downtown, and it changed, it, they had to restrict lanes of traffic, because it was adjacent to thoroughfares, and that didn't, wasn't conducive with people gathering. So I know communities have done it and been successful, and others have done it and not been successful. I think, I think that was more than we wanted to bite off with this plan, because I think that would be a much larger discussion.
Okay. And then a more minor question. I think I'm seeing more battery-powered, small motor-powered vehicles around town. Where I live, folks who are in wheelchairs and so on, and who are moving around and trying to get around the city as much as they can. Does the plan take into account the possible evolution of some of that stuff?
You know, it doesn't. You know, when you start talking about the...
Segways?
Segways, yes. And motor scooters that kids are riding, no, it really didn't touch on any of that from a safety standpoint, or should you design special facilities? I do know, though, when you talk, people with disabilities that are in chairs, whether they're manual or electric, our facilities that we design, we have standards in place that make them traversable for people with, even if it's just low mobility, they have a hard time lifting their legs. So from that standpoint, it does. It ensures that whatever facility we build, whether it's a sidewalk or a trail, that when they're new, they meet all those standards for the ADA.
Okay. And then one other, just one other question at the moment for me, and then we'll let other folks say whatever they want. During the winter, with the kind of winters that we have here, would there be certain parts of the system that would be prioritized for clearing and accessibility over other parts of the system? Because the maps show a pretty extensive system at some point in time, but I would think that access would be dampened to some degree by the climate, and I'm just wondering, would we be prioritizing just certain core pathways that would get cleared early and so on, so people had that year-round access?
And we do that now. We actually have a map on our city website, and it details the trails and sidewalks that the city is responsible for maintaining, those that homeowners are responsible for maintaining, and then there's some that we don't expect anybody is going to maintain them. That's the policy today. But that, those decisions, those have already been made. I think we review that on an annual, biannual basis, to see if there's a need to keep these, some of these segments open year-round. A lot of them are recreational trails. They're trails that get very little usage. And I'll even say, we've had winters, maybe three years ago, where there was just too much snow. We could not push it anywhere, and we just had to give up late in the year. It was, we'd just have to wait till spring, because there's no place for the snow to go. But we do, and schools are usually a priority. The routes along the major roadways are a priority, but we do have a rhyme or reason as to which ones are done first and which ones are not done at all.
Would the plan phase in over time? Are there certain phases that you, I know you had pages that had priorities on here, and I'm just wondering, would the idea basically be that certain, there would be phases, phase one, phase two, phase three, to implement the whole thing?
Not necessarily. I will say, as far as the funding goes, the city always has and will continue to apply for grants. There's a lot of money out there, livable communities, transit-oriented development. There's a lot of money for bikeways and for trails and sidewalks. So we'll always pursue those. In fact, that high school crossing of the railroad, I intend to come to the city council once this plan is adopted and ask to permission to adopt a resolution to apply for a grant to build that. And I know that I've got the Railroad and Federal Rail Administration ready to support that as well. So we're always going to, we're always going to pursue that. These other projects, I mean, they're going to compete for the funding, just like when I need a new dump truck, we're competing for funding against all the other citywide projects, the community center improvements, roadway reconstruction. All of these projects are competing for a limited pool of resources, and it's based on their merits. And the city council, department directors, they look at what they feel are priorities, and they pick and choose and make recommendations to city council on what should be included in the plan and what year. These improvements will be no different. They will compete for those same capital improvement dollars like any other project in the city would. The only exception would be, the Parks and Recreation does have a pool of money annually for rehabilitation of trails and sidewalks, the mills and overlays, seal coats, and they also have a small pool of money for installing new trails and sidewalks, and that's on an annual basis. So that will pick up a number of these, but most of these, you're going to see these being reconstructed when the roadway needs to be reconstructed, and at that time, we'll start having those discussions about trails on both sides, or bike lanes, or whatever the plan is kind of leaning towards. The other thing I'll say is that when we build these roadways and trails, we're having neighborhood meetings, we're coming up with the design, inviting the public in, and explaining to them what we're doing for stormwater, trail, sidewalk, roadway, add a lane, take away a lane, traffic signal, you name it. So there's always a process for the community to weigh in. This plan, just because it's in the plan, that doesn't guarantee it'll get built. At the end of the day, there is a due process, a public process, where people can voice their opinion, and the city council ultimately will vote to approve that project and what's included in the scope.
Thank you.
Who's next?
Nothing's come up about this, except what you had to say, and I'm interested in any more comment you have, because I found it interesting, the signage. One of the things that I, as a new resident of Eden Prairie about 10, 11 years ago, what found confusing was find, not finding signs when I thought it would help to have them. If we, if we're going to look at that as part of the plan, I just wanted to just point out that I think that's a really vital part, even though it's a small part of the real design, but I don't, what I don't know if you can answer is whether, as you're putting various pieces together, you know, say a development occurs, and there's a good opportunity to go ahead with an improvement of the type you've got here, and everything's a go, you come up with a signage plan, but then you've got all the other things that haven't yet come on board, so trying to be consistent over time is going to be, I think, a challenge. I'm, I'm not discouraging it at all, I think it's a wonderful element of the plan, I just find it a little hard to conceive of how it's going to move into future years, say it's 10, 15 years down the road, and you've already got the signage, by then there may be a difference, so we may have some differences depending on where things need to be at the time when that improvement gets, you know, gets up the list and can get funded. But I still encourage very much going in that direction.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else?
This question, just want to say, this is a nice plan, I like the vision, and I appreciate the extra two weeks to take a look at the plan, there's a lot of great things in it. Couple of questions, just, you kind of touched on it about the process, I'm unfamiliar with the capital improvement process here, so you, your department would initiate one of the priority areas, if it's outside of a grant funding, and then that would go through city council, that doesn't come through planning commission, does it?
I think that it does, I think the 10-year capital improvement plan comes through city planning commission once a year.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, I do not believe that the CIP comes through planning commission.
I think two years ago, we had a CIP come through here.
Yeah, my history says that we, we get a look at it, but I don't think we have an approval.
Yes, I think we got a look at it, but I don't think we necessarily voted on it, from what I remember.
My apologies.
Well, I think, as I remember, it hasn't been a regular annual thing, we have at times gotten a view of it, but I, I don't think we have a, an advisory, a formal advisory on that.
I would say we appreciate taking a look at it, Julie. We can.
I'd agree with that. So then if there's a, if there's, so it sounds like then you go through, there's a due process for every project, then if there's a disagreement about, that would go against this approved plan, how would that be vetted out?
The, the way the capital improvement program process generally works is we have a 10-year plan, and about April of each year, we start putting together a staff recommended plan. They devote a city council workshop, June and July timeframe, where we present that plan, the economics, the financing, and then it, we take that council input, and we might make changes to it based on that, and we come back, actually, it'll be in November 18th, the next city council meeting, they will approve the capital improvement program. Now, when we actually get, when we actually get to the point where we're designing things and meeting with the public, that's generally when most of the due process happens, because that's when the public is first invited in to learn a little bit more about the project. So if there was something controversial, let's say a sidewalk was being installed, and for whatever reason, the neighborhood didn't want that sidewalk, we would have those discussions with the community, and we try to, you know, you know, my job would be to encourage them to understand why it might be important to have that sidewalk. But if at the end of the day, we come to a conclusion that both city staff and the residents, this, this was not a good idea, there's some challenges here we were unaware of, we would either take that offer, if we still felt it was a good idea, ultimately, the set of plans we develop would go to the city council, and they'd approve that layout plan, is generally what they do. Anybody from the public that objects to that plan could come in, they'd have an opportunity to explain to the council why they felt that was not a good idea. At the end of the day, the city council will decide, does the sidewalk stay in, does it go away? So that, that's generally speaking, how the process would work.
And through, you know, there's a lot of different proposals, does the city own all the land that's involved? If, if we had the money to do this all tomorrow, does the city own all the property?
No, I, I would say we don't own all the property, I wouldn't know what percentage of the property we don't, we might have right-of-way constraints right now, that, you know, I'm not, off the top of my head, would know where they're at, so we'd, we'd have to look at this on a case-by-case basis, it's really going to depend on how much right-of-way exists.
I guess I'll ask a few questions perhaps, but thank you, thank you to staff for putting together such a, an elaborate report here. I, I got a question on the public process, or the, the public open houses that you had, it looked like there were five opportunities, and from the report, it says that there were about 200 people that took advantage of the in-person opportunities with post-it notes and forum-based discussions, and then there were another about 200 people that did the online survey, and in a population of about 60,000, subtracting out the non-taxpayer age group, you're, you're looking at maybe 1% total, do you feel that that's a, 1% of the taxpaying population, do you feel that that's a significant sample survey to enact such a policy that would be a big change for motoring public? And the second part to my question, but I'll ask that later, of motoring public and bicycle and pedestrian, as well as the transient public that are coming through?
I would say, honestly, that's a very good representation. We'd be lucky to get that on other plans, I think we've been through TOD plans, we've been through major center area plans, it's hard to get people engaged. I mean, unless they have a vested interest in this, and usually that means you're taking property from them, or you're impacting a business of theirs, there's generally not much interest. I would say we receive more public input than I thought we would. As far as taking away facilities for motor vehicles, I don't know that that's the case, I really see it as you're adding facilities for bikes and peds that might not exist today. You know, for, for most of these, we have very wide right-of-ways, we have the ability to install trails that don't exist today without eliminating roadways, or narrowing roadways, taking away lanes. I'm not going to say that universally across the board, that we can do that, but I don't see anything in here where we're losing a very important vehicular roadway at the expense of creating a sidewalk or a trail. So I'm not terribly concerned about that, but it really, the heart of your question about, was there enough opportunity for people to weigh into this? I think there was, and I think we, we've heard more from people on this plan than any plan that I've been involved with here at the city of Eden Prairie, so.
I think it was Edina that recently, the day, about a couple of years ago, were in the news for enacting a bicycle plan, and a bunch of colors, and it, to, you know, to the other commissioner's point, signage and education, I think it ended up being kind of a funny scenario at the beginning, at the onset, until they educated the public. Are you planning to educate the public first, and the systems kind of learn from their history?
Yeah, yeah, I would say that's a fair question. When we get to a point where we're going to do something that we haven't seen in our community, which this plan doesn't really call for a lot of that, I think some of the things that you're hearing about in Edina, where you need to Edina's plan, a lot of what's in this plan is just building on what we've always done, that's putting in a lot of trails, a lot of sidewalks. But I think when we do start talking about in-road bike lanes, there would be a process where, you know, we're going to hit the media really hard, we're going to work with PD, our communications department to get the word out, these things won't pop up overnight, and then people will be expected to kind of figure it out on your own.
What kind of feedback did you get from the non-bicyclist community? You were mentioning that generally those that are very passionate about something, seems to be the case when it comes in front of our, our body here, which is a small sample of the overall populace, those that generally don't have an opinion, or find the status quo, they just kind of sit put and stay at home. So did you get any reaction from the non-bicyclist community in relation to the inaction of on-street bicyclists? And I, I say this kind of from driving around and noticing that there are motorists that don't abide by the laws, and there are a number of bicyclists that don't abide by the laws, and so what kind of feedback did you get from the?
You know, the, the, what I'll call negative feedback that I heard was, probably one is, this mean my taxes are going up, so, and I explained, no, there is no new tax that's being proposed with this. Generally, people that didn't bike or walk, that was their concern. When you ask, what type of feedback did we get from people that were non-bikers, I'd say one of two things, one, get the bikers out of the road, very adamant about that. They don't understand this sharing concept of the roadway, and that they do have the legal right to be there. And then two was, get them off the trails, they're going too fast, I don't feel comfortable when I'm using, when I'm walking, or, so, almost like we don't know where to put them. So generally speaking, those were the two comments we heard from people who are non-bikers commenting on bikers.
Now, from a safety standpoint, you'd think that, especially with our weather, our winter weather, I mean, I, you know, the bicyclists have the, the right to be on the, I think it's the farthest right three feet of the, of the roadway that they're traveling, whatever direction that is, and then you have to stay three feet, I think is what it was, away from them as a motorist. And I may be inaccurate on that, but with the weather, and as we have, would there be a safety concern in having? I think this may have come up, because I thought Baker Road about a few years back tried to do a three-lane with a center and a bike on, on-street bike, and it, and it didn't pass, so, I mean, this conversation's kind of come up in the past, do you foresee that this kind of, the same result will, will occur in the future based on this plan, or is there something in the toolbox that, that can be used to kind of reaffirm the public's opinions on it, already established opinion?
No, I, I don't expect that there won't be conversations about whether or not bikes should be or should not be on the road, I think some people have very strong opinions about that on both sides. As far as bikers having a right to be in the roadway, my understanding is that they have a right to be in the middle of that lane and occupy the lane, and that they aren't relegated to the three feet off to the side, so I think, I think there's a lot of education that needs to be done about where bikers are allowed, where they're not allowed to go, I think a lot of drivers don't quite understand that, and I think a lot of bikers fail to follow the rules of the road as well, and that creates some, you know, a little bit of aggravation between the two groups of peoples. But yes, I, I do expect that if we are putting a bike, a bike lane on a roadway, and we're in that process of doing the layout with the public, there will be some people that are not in favor of that. Yeah, I can't guarantee you that everybody is going to be completely supportive of the on-road bike lanes.
Follow-up to that, this question might be, oh, sorry, if anybody else wants to go.
Go ahead.
A follow-up to that, this question might be outside of the scope of even the city's jurisdiction, but with bikers going onto the roadway, what is the talk on the state legislation side, and that you might be in a part of that conversation, or that, you know, speaking with other public works directors of other municipalities in this, in the Met Council area, on licensing bikers for the use of the, or, or helping to defray the cost of all these improvements?
Yeah.
I don't know what it would be, but, I mean, there's going to be cost to this, and it sounds like there may be some right-of-way jurisdictional acquisitions by the government, by the city that would have to occur to enact some of these plans, but how would we defray that cost?
I, I have not been a part of those discussions, no.
So, kind of a follow-up question, you said there was a bicycle lane proposal that failed recently?
I believe three years ago, there was a discussion about restriping Baker Road from Mitchell to the north as a three-lane with bike lanes on both sides of the roadway.
So in effect, if that, that failed at some point due to public disagreements, if something like that comes up again, it's already, it's a tougher battle, right, because we've already approved the plan, so tacitly, we've approved this idea, and then a council adopts this plan, so it's a, it would be a little higher of a, higher bar for someone to disagree with that, would that be fair to say?
You know, again, at the end of the day, the city council has a lot of authority, whether it's in the plan or not, you're familiar with how the process works, if the public doesn't want it, the council will hear that, and I think they'll make their decision based on what they're hearing from their constituents.
Who ultimately oversees this new agenda, this, this new policy that we're coming forward? Is it flop on your table, or does it, you know, come on the Parks and Recreation? Who, who would, because this is obviously going to be a greater task
Yep.
Over the long term, so.
I, I would say that's a shared responsibility, the engineering division is in Public Works, and they oversee the design of roadways, so a lot of the on-road facilities, you're going to see an engineering involvement. If it's off-roadway, it might be a Parks and Recreation, I think, you know, like with many things, we work together on these types of projects, so it, it could be one or both of us, it really depends on the project.
More? How about this, anybody else have any comments?
Well, I'll just make a comment, I, I like the idea of at least painting a picture, and, and that's what I see this as, is, is painting a picture for the future, and yet we're not casting it in concrete, it's not something that we're absolutely required to do, but it's, it's a, a vision for the city, and I think we got to take it step by step, and look at each individual step and see, but at least, you know, we, we were talking at the council workshop about kind of saying, what, what kind of city do we want? And this, this to me gives some indication of what kind of city we want, but it also allows us to look at each individual circumstance and judge that on its, on its own merit. So I'm, I'm supportive of it, I'm very supportive of it, particularly because you were able to get a grant to do it, that's, that's great, and, and I think it just helps paint a vision, and yet doesn't lock us into, into anything, so I, I like the idea of, of having that, that vision out there.
Yeah, I mean, I see it as kind of a first of many steps, right?
Another say, I appreciate the extra time we had to look over the plan and sort of understand what we're actually voting on, and I do at this point, support adoption.
Do we need to, just building on, on those last couple of comments, do we need to, when, when, if we vote to recommend forwarding this to the council, do we need to put a contingency on there that we're not saying financially we understand the cost of the recommendation, and that we, what we're forwarding is a very well-thought-through conceptual approach to a, a bicycle and pedestrian plan, but we, we are not recommending, we, we don't yet understand the cost implications, and there are a couple of things like that, or the timing implications, and that those are other important components of the plan that before it would get final approval, would have to be better understood.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, I don't believe that your motion needs to include anything relative to timeframe nor financing, because as Robert talked about in his presentation, this is meant to be a living, working document that will be modified as necessary, and we will continue to revisit it through the process.
Okay, thank you.
I have one other question, Mr. Ellis. I live in a part of the city south of the airport and off to the west, there's new development that's probably in the biggest piece left in the city now, that's getting to pull together pretty strongly, and it just occurred to me as I looked at the map and saw, of course, that there's less destination points in that part of town, it's highly residential, but the patterns of traffic and the way folks will move around is going to move, change, obviously, as more people live in that part of town and find different interests and so forth than they knew about, that I just encourage, and I'm sure you've already anticipated, the fact that you will be continuing to review this, and as things move ahead in those intervening years, that, that probably will emerge as another area to look at more strongly than we currently can.
Absolutely, we know there's a park going in, and we know there's two neighborhood pools going in, so those will be destinations that people are going to try to access, yes.
Okay, with that being said, I think we've, we're ready for a motion, is everyone okay with that? The recommendations for motions are obviously on page two of the transfer letter. Actually, they're on page one and page two.
Mr. Chairman, move to recommend to the city council the approval of the draft pedestrian and bicycle plan as presented.
Second?
Motion, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Julie, with that, do you have any other items for planners report for tonight?
Mr. Chair, we do not. Mr. Chair, we do not.
Okay, are there any members' reports? Any continuing business? Any new business? If not, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So move.
Second.
Motion, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is closed, thank you very much.